Say good evening to everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm going to ask you to stand. First and foremost, we come this evening just thanking you for your many blessings, your goodness and your grace. And we thank you, Lord, for blessing us to come out tonight to conduct the business of the county. Lord, we ask your blessings in wisdom and knowledge as we address the issues of the county. And we thank you for this privilege. Bless our citizens, our commissioners. And we thank you, Lord, and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father, for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll call on our July 21st, 2014 regular board commissioners meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda will be the adjustments to the agenda. I don't believe we have any major adjustments. Here's one thing that we need to be aware of. Under item six, public hearings, consideration of amendment to the animal control ordinance. Commissioners, item 314.3 has asked to be strike. It will not be a discussion item because we need to do further research and possibly contact the general assembly about this requirement because they're a little bit more than what many animal owners can be, even veterinarians. So 314.3, we're asked that the board would strike that. Okay. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, we'll call for a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Thank you. Our next item would be our citizen comments. Do we have any? All right. Our announced delegations, Esther Laster, Gates Partners for Health.
To our chair, our other commissioners, newly appointed county manager, and to the citizens here this evening. I come to you greeting from the Gates Partners for Health. We bring to you this evening a July report, our semi-annual commissioners' report. As you know, Gates Partners for Health is a network of agencies and citizens that are dedicated to improving the health and quality of life in our community. During the past six months, we have engaged in several activities, and I will go over a few of them with you this evening. One of our major events took place on the first Friday in February. It was the Gates Partners for Health Goes Red, a symposium on cardiovascular health. This particular symposium was attended by 90 of our local citizens and two of our county commissioners. Citizens were able to view exhibits and learn from presenters and also indulge in a healthy meal. Our presenters for that evening were the nutrition pair out of Elizabeth City, John and Angie Lambruson. Our cardiologist, who was our main presenter, was Dr. Lindsay White. This symposium was organized by one of our committees known as the Chronic Disease Support Team. We did receive funding for this special event, and the funding was provided by the overseen Healthcare Foundation out of Suffolk, Virginia. Another engagement that we indulged in for this semester or this part of the year was a partnership with GITS. We wrote a grant and received funding to have magnetic signs posted on the GITS vehicles to advertise our farmers' market. So if you've seen any of the GITS vehicles driving around, you see our sign. We were hoping that that would encourage citizens to become more aware that we do have a farmers' market and come out and support us. Also, on the front side of your flyer that you have, we have listed several community involvements. This includes the entire year. On the backside, another grant that we were able to receive was from Vident Rona Joan Hospital Community Benefits. And from that grant, we focused on heart-safe community projects. Back in December, I talked to you about the AED stickers. That was one of the projects. Another project was funding equipment for our rescue and EMS. And with that equipment that they have in place now, they're able to do their training for CPR and without having to borrow from another county. We've also engaged in, with the funding from this grant, programs sponsored by the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Services, Gates County Center. They worked with our athletes in the fall, our football team, our cheerleaders, and the upcoming season cheerleaders. And the curriculum that was used was entitled Eat to Beat. And of course, if you read in detail later, you find out that we did have some very good results. Family Consumer Science Agent Aaron Story also taught the evidence-based 15-week program entitled Give Your Heart a Healthy Beat. This was targeted to a senior citizen group. And from the results, if you ever had an opportunity to just listen to the latest, they give excellent testimonies on the number of inches they've lost, how much energy they have there, and the fact that they want to continue the exercise program that went along with the curriculum. We have also sponsored two living healthy workshops this semester. One was taught in Core Peak and the other in Sunbury. One was the Living Healthy Chronic Disease Self-Management, was taught in May-June, and the other was the Diabetes Self-Management, which was also taught from May to June. Those workshops are six weeks long, and we meet two and a half hours each week. And the participants were very impressed with the knowledge that they received, and also some great testimonies went along with that. We have started or continuing to engage in our diabetes support group. We have had signs made up, and you will see them the week prior to the meeting. They will be posted at the community center, encouraging people or as a reminder that we do have a diabetes support group. This group meets for one hour. Thirty minutes of it is educational instructions, 15 minutes open discussion, answering questions, and in the last 15 minutes, we engage in exercise. I have also listed for your information the objectives for the community health priorities. On the last report, I gave what the priorities were. At this time, I've listed what the objectives stated are and the priority issue. If you notice, we have three major priority issues, actually four. Behavioral health, which involves substance abuse and mental health. Another priority issue is cancer. A third is obesity. And the fourth one is chronic disease prevention and reduction. These objectives and the activities that are being planned for them were carried from 2014 through 2016. These plans were sent into the state as part of a requirement for the community health assessment. Gates Partners for Health will continue to develop strong partnerships with our area agencies and local hospitals to administer interventions targeted at identified health disparities from the community health assessment. This is a quick overview. We are still strong and very active, and we would like to thank you for your continued financial support. And if you notice on the backside, for 2013, 2014, we did list our financial supporters. Are there any questions or comments at this turn?
All right. Well, Ms. Laster, we... I don't have a comment, but we certainly thank you, or questions rather, we thank you for your leadership and commitment to helping Gates County stay healthy and become healthy. So we appreciate the support very much.
Thank you. And there are other comments here for citizens if you'd like to pick them up later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item was the public hearings, item 46. And the first public hearing will be the consideration of amendments to the personnel ordinance. And you have that in front of you. You're going to need to go into public hearing or citizen discussion prior to us acting on this proposed revision to the personnel ordinance. And we'll need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Motion second, to go into public hearing for discussions on amendments to personnel ordinance. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, we're in public hearing for the consideration of amendments to the personnel There will be changes to paragraph 11.6, North Carolina Local Government Employee Retirement System contributions, and 11.7, North Carolina Government Employee Retirement System benefits. Are there any public comments? Okay. All right, being there are none, we will call for a motion to come out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. What we have, of course, in paragraph 11.6 and 11.7, it deals with the North Carolina Local Government Employee Retirement System contributions and benefits in case of retirement or death benefit. And our previous ordinance had not been updated from 2003 to incorporate the latest requirement for payment of death benefit. And one of those, our old ordinance provision specified $20,000, and in 2004, it was changed from $20,000 to $25,000 to $50,000. So in 11.7, the wording was changed to all North Carolina Local Government Employee Retirement System benefits, including death benefits, are determined in accordance with the rules or regulations established and paid by the State of North Carolina Office of the Treasury. Please refer to the latest Local Government Retirement System handbook or contact a North Carolina Retirement System directly for retirement benefits and information. And it was done that way because it may change in the future. And we don't want to be behind the curve, if you will, in trying to make individual changes. Whenever a benefit is applied for, they can look at what the latest requirement is in the system rather than trying to specify what's in our personnel ordinance. So we'll open up a discussion. And if none, we'll call for a motion to approve the amendment to personnel ordinance as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do accept the amendment to personnel ordinance as presented before us. So motion.
I second that motion.
All right, it's been motion second that we approve the personnel ordinance amendment as presented. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, thank you much. All right, our next public hearing will be on considerations of amendments to the animal control ordinance. And you have that before you. The Animal Patrol Committee has thoroughly looked into this, and they have recommended changes. County manager has gone over them. Our attorney has gone over them. And what you see before you is what has been requested to be amended except where we just struck item 314.3. So at this time, we'll go into public hearing. We need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, to go into public hearing for animal control ordinance. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, we're in public hearing for the animal control ordinance. If anyone has any comments or concerns, discussions. Would you mind coming to the podium so everyone can hear you?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment on the section that you guys are reconsidering. The comment was made about this applying to veterinarians. It is not something that applies to veterinary services because by definition, a primary enclosure is one that is not temporary. So any temporary enclosure, including enclosures at a veterinary clinic, would not come under that standard, just to clarify that for you. The other question that I had was amendment number two of the original amendments that were given stated that we would have animal cruelty investigators appointed by the county Board of Commissioners pursuant to Article 4, Section 19A-45 of the State of North Carolina Animal Cruelty Statutes. I know that this had been considered, talked to by Sheriff Webb and you guys, but did we ever come to a conclusion on that as to what we were going to do?
I believe that, and I was not in all the discussions, but apparently they were discussing and decided not to include that at this time. I don't know if Sheriff Webb might have anything on that, but that was...
I don't actually.
Okay. But at this time, it was not considered feasible to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to publicly thank all the members of that board, including our animal control officers. And the help that we got from the interim county manager, Mr. Windly, was very helpful in getting this to come forward and be finalized. And I just want to hand the board, I just wanted to publicly thank you guys for that.
Thank you much.
Good evening, folks. How are you all today? Just had a couple of things that I wanted to touch base on just to make sure, because we're going to be enforcing this, I just want to follow through on something. Looking at 303-1, and there we talk about the group investigations and having dogs and animals checked over by veterinarian. You jump from 303-1 then down to 303-4, we're talking about the process of being able to recruit the expense for the county. I was just going to see if there was any way we could go ahead and put that all together as one so that people understand that where we are conducting an investigation, that we will be asking them to try to recruit the cost to the county for that particular thing. I'm just asking if you could just look at that. Nothing major there. That's covered in that situation. We just want to make sure that we, when we go to enforce a ordinance like that, that they understand. We tell them that we're going on ordinance 303-1, and then we forget that something is left out of our 303-4, and they're going to think we're coming back at them later on. Just want to make sure that maybe we could combine those two and make it just one general ordinance. That way, there's no question. In the 303 statute there too, it says the Gates County may seek assistance. I think that's supposed to be seek assistance for the impound large animals. I just want to make sure that we can make sure that they understand that we have the right to do that as well too, to seek their assistance. And does everybody follow what I'm talking about when I say putting 303-1 and 303-4 together? You following me?
Type of.
Type of, just follow the way I like to say it. That way, when we say and we're acting on ordinance 303-1, we won't have to worry about them understanding that we're going to seek for those particular parties to reimburse the county because I'm trying to look out for taxpayer on that. And then if you look at one question we just had, because this is a, this is an issue that we deal with all of our county ordinances. If you look at the 312, we've got your penalties and lawful violations. Y'all got five or more violations of the same continuous. I'm just letting you all know that normally what we do is in most of these cases with the county ordinances, once we issue that county citation, and if it's not paid, at that point, we usually seek a criminal summons against them to bring them, because that is giving them the opportunity to pay the county. But if they don't, and we've had cases where they don't do that, Al's going in, and what we do is we go and issue a criminal summons and bring them before the big judge here instead of taking it through the county. So the only thing I'm looking is, I want to make sure that you're going to, make sure that we're giving somebody five times, in other words, the way I'm seeing this.
What you're saying is, the way you're doing business now, they won't get to that fifth opportunity.
Exactly, exactly. Because even if it says five or more and a penalty of $400, that's more than what we even issue in the courts. So what I guess I'm asking is, how many times do you want us to give the same person the same charge? Whereas if right now, if we have, say for instance, we're using the junk car ordinance and the grass ordinance, if we issue a county citation at a $50 fine, that's giving them that one chance to pay that fine to the county. And if they don't do it or don't take care of it, then we issue a criminal summons through our magistrate's office and bring them to court here in front of the judge here.
I was taking that, Sheriff. I mean, you can go and have one violation, and take care of that violation, and they get called again, and you got another one. Well, that's a second, so now it's not $50 anymore, it's $100.
Okay.
You know, it's separate from what you would take to the court. This is just...
Well, I guess what I'm, I understand what you're saying, and I guess what I'm asking is, where do we stop? Where do you want us to go? Because like I said, if you get somebody, they bring in three times on three county ordinances, and they're obviously not going, you know, to continue to do the same thing. Where do we have a breaking point? Where do you want us to say, okay, that's it, we're going to the big court? That's what I guess I'm asking. It's myself and especially from the officers that will be out here enforcing it. Where do you all want us to go?
Well, it also brings to mind, to make sure we're all thinking the same way, let's say that violation one is in 2014, and you don't have another issue with that person until 2017. Are we, is that violation number two?
Well, that's why, that's why I'm coming to you all. See, where it's hard for us understanding the difference between the county ordinances, I can't track it. Whereas if we issue a criminal summons, they come in for the court. It's going to be on their criminal record. It'll be in the county record over here at the clerk of courts as well. Whereas, you know, we, you know, everybody purges their records out. But I guess what I'm just asking is, where do you all want us to break that point on as far as charging folks? We use the most cases, what we've been doing on county ordinances, is usually give a first time, it's usually a verbal warning. That's where we have Mr. Boone, and we used to send him, we refer to as the letter. We sent out on a violation like a junk car or a ghetto or a grass or something like that. We give a verbal warning, then we issue the county citation. If they don't take care of that, a county citation, that's when we usually issue, come in and get a criminal summons.
What did our old ordinance specify?
Well, this is all new. It's basically, the old orders were just a straight $50 fine. There was no extra or anything like that. I'm just, we're just trying to get it going so that we're all on the same sheet of music. So if you say three times, you know, that's fine with us. We're just trying to make sure that we're on the same sheet of music.
Well, you know, as long as they pay the penalty, the fine, I mean, we can do it fifty times. But I think that's the intent. You know, once a person do it so many times, I guess you begin to wonder...
Okay, I wrote back the square of one again. That's why I'm asking, how many times do we give them a break? How many times do we issue a county citation?
When I was reading this, I thought with a number of violations that when, let's say you go to someone, they might have more than one violation at the first visit.
That's my question.
And I thought, that's why they were saying, if you come to my home and I have 20 dogs and there are five violations, then it's not a $50 fine I would be facing. I've got five violations on that one visit. It's a larger amount. That's the way I would answer.
Well, I would say, if we're talking about large animals, let's say we're dealing with horses, and the person has three horses, and they're not, and they're starving the horses potentially, would be, would be, and I had that same question getting ready to answer, or getting ready to ask rather. Ed, you know the law better than we do. Is this, is this an area, section 312, that we need to get back with our attorney or with the state?
All I'm saying is, we just want to make sure that we're enforcing it the way you all want to enforce it. And that's when I look down there and see five times, and you get somebody, these folks have worked hard on these ordinances in trying to make these suggestions. And I know that there are people in this county that will push the law and push it to the very, very limit.
There's the interpretation, like here, we have...
Three different...
Three interpretations of the same ordinance.
I think we need clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're saying that, that different interpretations again.
I think you see, one of our citizens, you know, they go in, they got a chain violation, they got an enclosure violation, food violation, and all of a sudden, I'm going to hit them with three violations. I mean, I, you know, the violation is that they violate the ordinance, and you've been called out there to take action. And so, you know, they should be able to have a penalty and give an opportunity to correct it. And if they don't correct it and they're called again, then it would seem to be a second violation.
So you're wanting us to issue a citation for each one of those, one for shelter, one for no food?
I would not want to see that.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. We're right back where the old one wants to go. That's the only question I had.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll say, rest of my comments for after we... Was it good?
Well, I tell you what, rather than I give you the answer right now, you...
Totally understand. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're going to be enforcing this for you all and for these folks. Like I said, I too want to commend the group for everything they did and come up with these suggestions. But when I looked at this, it's the only thing, just a couple of my own things there that I saw that we just might need to clarify for us.
Right. Just before you sit down, what would you suggest based on your experience?
I would say, if you're going to, if you're going to do it and do this in case, I would not go, you know, the old saying, three strikes or out. I wouldn't go more than made it three times. If you go back and you write somebody one time for, and say like you, they said, next year, we do have to do the same thing. Al's real good about keeping up with his reference. And say that he knows in 2014, you wrote somebody a citation, and he goes back in 2015, the same thing. Well, come the third time, no, you've hit your three strikes, we'll go ahead and get a criminal summons and bring them here in front of the judge. That's what I was suggesting, of course, maybe three times.
Right, a criminal summons.
Yeah, I would say a third time. If you hit your third strike, you get a criminal summons.
So it's not on the fourth event, it's when the third one was heard?
Yes, sir.
He would have three penalties, and at the same time he has the third one, he also has a criminal...
Summons, where he'll be brought in. Summons, where he'll be brought in here in front of the judge.
How about, how about within a year's time? I mean, you know, if it's over six years period of time, would you make a difference in that?
Well, that would be concerning, concerning the crime, considering the type of nature of the incident, just at, just at that. That's, that's something. And like I said, that's where we have to make the call on that. But I would say no more than three times, I think would be more than reasonable, just in, just in my opinion.
A master question, when you go out on these cases, or like when Deputy Parker goes out on these, do you, are, if there are violations, do you currently write more than one citation per visit?
No, it's usually just one citation.
And you list everything?
And just everything, yes ma'am, it's just basically check the block type thing on a citation, and it's just a-
Do you get them for malnutrition, improper enclosure?
Well, see, all of that would fall basically on the animal cruelty. And that's basically what we, that's what the whole thing is, is be animal cruelty.
So would it be fair to say that on the first event, if it was, if it was real ugly, you could issue a criminal summons?
Very first time, yes sir.
The very first time?
Depending on the nature of it, yes sir.
That leads to the sheriff, or his animal cruelty officer, to use their judgment, along with magistrate, I guess?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We would just take the information, and see, all we would do is, if we have a clear-cut violation, even the county ordinance, we'd just take that same ordinance, and we go to the county magistrate, and we explain to them, we've given them this opportunity, and they failed to pay it, by a certain number of days, we just issue a county summons. And that's why we go with criminal summons, and see if they don't show up on the, and we have them, that don't show up on the criminal summons, if they don't show up on the criminal summons, they'll issue a warrant.
And arrest.
And that's why we arrest them, and they have to push behind and get out. And that's when they realize, a lot of times, that's when they realize that we're, basically, we're not playing. And we go from there.
What is the statute for issuing this, the criminal summons?
I don't know it right offhand, sir, but it's just, it's just a proper cause, process to go through with the, with the magistrate's. And we've been real good, because they work real well. Like I said, they have copies of the ordinances, and they've got it right there. So we've never had any troubles with the magistrate, that's, that's my thing.
So it looks like three times, we stop at $200 then?
Yes, sir. Well, whatever, you're, you're money-wise, that's up to you all. I'm just saying, I would think three strikes ought to be enough. And just so you all know, just to give you an idea, we had a case, y'all were in court how long today? Five and a half hours? About five and a half hours on one cruelty animal case today in court. The parties were found guilty, and the fines and costs to the humane side were excessive $12,000, to give you an idea. And of course, it was appealed to square court, so we'll be dealing with that come down in the next few months. So it's like I said, it can get kinda costly. Okay? Anything to think? Again, again, I want to thank all the crowd that worked with the animal group, and we appreciate everything you're doing, y'all did a good job. Mr. Bailey?
I did have a comment, based on what you said. What would you do in a situation like we had with the gentleman on Route 32, who picked up 65, 70 animals?
That's the case I was talking about, took five and a half hours to try.
But in a situation like that, if you go out there and you see more than five violations, okay, to folks this-
Yes, sir.
To me, my feeling is, the criminal summons should be issued again, not after the third time.
Okay, in that particular case, there were warrants drawn, over four, over 40 warrants were drawn.
I understand, okay.
Yes, sir.
But what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is, is if, if you allow someone to have, let's say, five violations, when you go out there, five different things-
Yes, sir.
Or five animals.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And you hit them with a warning the first time, they don't correct it the second time, it's a $50 fine?
Yes, sir.
For five animals?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's definitely how I understand it.
But just to understand this, Mr. Bailey, in that particular case, like the one you're speaking of, that's again, that's the officer's call.
I understand.
That's, that's the call on that, yes, sir.
But if you've got a serious situation like that, where you've got that many animals-
Yes, sir.
You know, something, something, that guy needs to get over here.
Yes, sir. And, and like I said, that's again, that falls back on the officer. And again, it's, it's, again, it's the officer's call and the severity of the crimes. In that particular case, as you're speaking of, the one we did have in court today, there was a lot of stuff that was there right away, that we had to address.
And I did also wanna comment that we have, we have an amendment in there for the county to have an animal that's been picked up on a cruelty charge, to be evaluated by veterinarian. The reason why we wanna do that is so when you go to court, you have some physical evidence, you know, pictures and assessment by that veterinarian and so forth, someone. So when you bring this person in, and you charge them with animal cruelty, you have evidence of that.
We already do that. We're, we're already doing that. We take pictures and so forth, in case like that, just about all of our cruelty cases, we do that already.
And they're all examined or evaluated by-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, in most cases like that. And the thing that you're mentioning on that is what I was talking about a while ago, is we just need to make sure that when we do that, it's understood by the people that are being charged with the cruelty, that they are gonna be required to reimburse the county. Because I, y'all know, y'all don't give me the money to do that. The only problem, the only thing that we do run into every once in a while, and this is something that can't be helped, is we'll have people call us, the dog's just been hit by a car.
Right.
And we don't know who the owner is. And they want us to take the dog up and take it to the vet. Of course, the vet, first thing she's gonna ask is, who's paying for this? And that's what we run into every now and then. And that's why we can't get involved in that, you know, that we have picked them up, and the only thing we can do is we take them to the vet. Vet says that the dog needs to be put down, that's all we can, the vet made that decision. We don't do that.
If they don't have any way of knowing who the owner is, then that would be, that's called.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you all again. Appreciate it.
All right, anyone else? Okay. All right, we'll call for a motion to private public hearing.
Mr. Boone?
Hi.
Motion's second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All in both names. Okay, we have the force, the changes, under 201.11, we have another typo there, where it says 10 days, should be or more, yeah, a little more, get that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In section 201.41, they're top exotic animals.
Mm-hmm.
How does a coyote become exotic animal? Raised for profit. And believe it or not, people actually do that, keep them in their house, so.
I still don't think it's considered an exotic animal when he's running loose in the countryside up here too.
The definition that I went by was the definition of North Carolina State statute. Furnishment of that definition.
Okay, Commissioner Attorney General, I see, by that definition, it would put restrictions on being able to keep that animal, I think that's what's beginning there.
Well, I know, I know we have hunters in the area that have these, what they call fox pens, and coyotes in them. The coyote is listed as a, in wildlife book, as a nuisance, you can shoot him any time of the year that you see him, if you can, if you can get a shot at him. And, and I just don't see that as an exotic animal, I see it as a pest in our county.
Well, yeah.
And I feel like they're targeting the guys that have them in these pens. And I, and I know maybe that's not the greatest sport in the world, put dogs up in and chase animals around in a round circle, but I feel like it's targeting these hunters.
Well, with 304, if you turn to the second page, 304.4, where it says, any exotic animal owned, harbored, or possessed as prior to this effective date, of this amendment shall be legal with proper documentation. These animals must be registered with the gate county office within 30 days of effective date of amendment. So if you've got one, you can keep them, but you gotta register them. But if you, if you get one after this, after we pass this, then they're not allowed at all, is that what we're-
Supposedly, that's the way after.
That's the way to take it.
I would just like that coyote, in the exotic animals, straight stripped and taken out.
All right, we have one recommendation to strike the coyote, okay? All right, under 303.3, as we're pouring out, there's another typo, seek, instead of see. And another three, section 312, it's been recommended that we have a number of violations of three, cut off the penalty at $200, and more than three violations, the owner will be subject to criminal summons in a court of law, kind of general statute, whatever. That's been recommended, all the discussions, anyone disagree with that?
Mr. Chairman, I think what Mr. Webb was suggesting, not after the third strike, not on the third strike.
On the third, third. So-
With, Mr. Chairman, with the, with the sheriff's ability to use his judgment on the first, second, or third offense, I'm wondering if we, if we put criminal summons in there on the third event, someone could take this, could take this and interpret it. You can't give me a criminal summons on the first offense, because I've, I've never had one. If we just leave the criminal summons off, I mean, it's, it's the sheriff and his deputies called to do that, first, second, or third.
If I make just something as simple as upon the third consecutive offense, that pervert criminal action will be taken, instead of county ordinance, just put it as criminal action taken. That way, we can issue either a warrant or a criminal summons.
As allowed, or as allowed by-
Under county ordinance, that after the third consecutive offense, that pervert criminal action, not county ordinance action, criminal action will be taken. Just a suggestion.
You know, according to law of North Carolina, whatever's-
That way, we could issue either a warrant or a criminal summons. That way, you're not issuing either, like you said, a warrant or a summons, just that pervert criminal action shall be taken.
And we, you can still issue a warrant on, after the first one?
Right, that way you still do the first one, but after a third consecutive, a third consecutive. And still, I understand, it's still the officer's call. It's just like Mr. Bailey mentioned about the animal cruelty of the folks we had today. That was no question, no doubt about it, that was a warrant situation in the very beginning. The officer has that, has that authority.
All right.
And I recommend that we change the wording on that to read, the criminal summons may be issued for any violation but a minimum of the third violation, at the officer's discretion, or something along those lines. That way, if it's serious enough, he can actually issue a criminal summons on the first violation, but that's up to their discretion to do that. It's like, it's like Jack was saying, if you, if you just put wording in there that says, on the third violation, you're gonna get a criminal summons, and they go out there the first time, and it's 40 animals that they're having picked up, the guy can say, well, this was only my first violation, you can't give me a criminal summons for that.
Sometimes a simplification of something is, is the better way.
Right.
Because they know what rule number such and such in their, in their sheriff's manual, and what the law says.
I did wanna make a, I had a question for Mr. Attorney. When you were talking about the coyotes, why are they kept, why are the coyotes being kept? What purpose do they-
They, they run dogs for.
I'm sorry?
They let their hunting dogs run them.
Train dogs.
The train dogs.
The trained hunting dogs.
Right.
And they can't do that in wild?
Well, you can, you can, you can do it in the wild. A dog's gonna chase whatever he decides to chase, from a rabbit, from a rabbit to a squirrel to the coyote, or the deer, the bear, whatever he decides to do.
You have to understand that the intent of this recommendation was to protect emergency personnel, police officers, people that are coming to this premise for emergency, and if they don't know what's in their house, or on those grounds, if there's an animal or something like that that can harm them, they need to know about it. If, if someone wants to keep the coyote, and it's under the North Carolina statutes that they're allowed to do that, as long as they follow a proper registration for that animal, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with taking it out either.
But if the, if the North Carolina statute doesn't say that, then what do you do?
I feel like you targeted the hunters, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't write the law, sir. That's the North Carolina statute. We did not write that law.
All right. I think we're back in, section 312, and it's been recommended that as a minimum, on the third violation, further criminal action shall be taken. Sheriff, I think that you, you heard that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this gives you latitude, on the first one, if it's bad enough, that you could take action.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and 314.3 is to be struck, for now. All right, more so that we're clear, I think the only one we missed was 303.1, and I believe, I would recommend a solution to that would be, where it says, if there's evidence of cruelty, and we could either say, reference paragraph 304.1, for the recoup of expenses from the owner, just reference 304.1, and add that language in there.
Mr. Chairman, are we contracted with veterinarian? It says, may be taken to the veteran contracted by the county.
I think that's, that's the normal procedure, is that right, Sheriff?
Yes, sir. We would, we would do that on the cruelty case, and basically, it's, we try to, I guess you say, spread it between the county, by veterinarians.
Is that contracted or contacted?
We, we just contact them, we just go to the first available-
Taken this, you contacted, you made that clear. Well, I don't know, I don't think we would take a, don't we know the charges before you go to negotiate?
Yes, sir. In a situation like that, we just, all we're doing, doing is, and that's saying, the way I think they understand it wants to do is, is just make sure the animal's documented, and if we can take it to a vet, first available vet, and that's what we're saying, it's not necessarily contract with the county vet, we try to use the vets in the county.
Okay. Well, you're probably right, our contact, I think, all right?
Yeah, we contact them-
That needs to be changed.
And have them look at it. It's just like we do with changing our oil for my cars, we use Dixie and we use grants and so forth, and varies one time, so we basically switch between, as long as they are good there with us in the county, we try to, we use all the vets.
All right. Let's go back to 303.1.
Which were?
Sorry, 31E. 303.1E would be, if an animal is seized by animal control officer for cruelty, it may be taken to a veterinarian contacted by the county, not contracted. And at the end of the sentence, would see, would see paragraph 303.1- And at the end of the sentence, would see, would see paragraph three oh three point four, for recoup of expenses from the owner. Okay? There weren't clear what we, and two oh one point four one. Commissioner Turnigan has requested that coyotes be struck. Are there any discussions on that? Okay, that would be struck as well. All right, board, are we ready to take action on this? If so, we'll call for a motion to approve the?
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, sir, we did not cover three sixteen point three. And three fifteen point four.
What is your problem with those?
I'm sorry?
I mean, we broke those over individually, I mean, we weren't reading every one of them. I mean, are there issues with those?
Well, three fifteen point four says that private citizens shall not be allowed to perform operations on animals that are normally done by a qualified caregiver, such as a veterinarian. This one includes stay neutered, deer propping, and rabies shots. This does not include livestock, where people are giving shots with livestock.
Yeah, I think we've got a disclaimer in the ordinance that says that livestock's, so what we're not including. Yeah, the, for your clarification, because we did not discuss a new paragraph, it's because we didn't see any changes that need to be made. The ones that we discussed are basically those that, that we need some modifications to, or whatever. So, all right. We have a motion to approve the first, the animal control ordinance as amended and revised in our discussions.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to ask for an effective date?
The committee's recommendation is that it be effective immediately unless the board feels otherwise.
Okay. I think that. So, we can back the day against that. I mean, that's just a matter of.
Otherwise it's, it's said it's passed.
Yeah, soon it's passed, okay. Okay.
Well, this is due out of 21st.
Yeah.
The 21st, yeah.
All right. We, ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept with the changes.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I suppose a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, aye? All right. Okay, our next item would be the approval on a new business. Item seven or eight, seven, you have the county manager appointment to the RCMV board, the Alamo Regional Solid Lace Management Authority, the Alamo Rural Planning, TCC, the Quinones, Shawon Gates Landfield Board, and Tri-County Animals Shelter Board. All of these boards need an appointment where county manager generally serves on. And we need to have our county manager appointed to serve on those boards. What is the plan for?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to your board, county manager, county manager, to depart from those boards that you just referenced.
All right, so motion second. The fourth county manager, the Alamo Regional Solid Lace Management Authority, Alamo Rural Planning Board, TCC, PCG Land Bill Commission, RCMV Council, and the Tri-County Animals Shelter Board. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay, the next item would be the approval of a resolution to cover the interim county manager's tenure, the signature of the site plans, plats, and maps recorded in the RCTD's office. We had an original submitted, and then we have another one submitted by Al County Attorney. Have a chance to look over it. It pretty much covers the tenure that the interim county manager was here. There were a number of plats that were signed and reviewed by him. It is required that the board approve him as a review officer. So, we need to take action on the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Can you go back and change something I think has already been done? Isn't that something in the Constitution by ex post facto laws? You can't predate, I mean, do something and go back and change it?
I don't think we're, we're not changing this. I mean, that's why we went to the Al County Attorney. The action was taken. I think the issue is, is whether or not the board was in agreement, was in action, taken, and that the person was, was able and called by to do that. And so, that is, that is what we're doing. This came straight from the attorney said, there are no legal laws that we're violating. County Attorney is not an implicated actor.
Are we sure that this is an all-inclusive list from other ones that he has signed?
I think there's a, if you look in there, I thought I saw, let's see. "Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution ratifying the actions of the interim county manager Kenneth Wimbley be recorded in these county RCTD's office and indexed in the name of the acting interim county manager Kenneth Wimbley, and this resolution shall become effective." Somewhere in here, I thought I saw other.
Yes, we're, somewhere I didn't have that copy.
Because I did ask about that, that is not the entire list.
But some people don't record their plats as soon as they have them drawn, they hold on to them.
Commissioner Harper, the last, the last line under the second paragraph at the bottom, where it says, "Together with any other plats that were executed by him between March 10th, 2014 to July 16th, 2014." So that covers that.
But I didn't have this before tonight.
Okay.
Tonight, I mean, we didn't have this, it wasn't sent to us on the email or anything. Correct.
It was sent out to everyone, I thought.
In this part?
Yeah. It gets so big, probably.
I thought, I read, when I see Melissa Coe's name, I can try to read it.
But it is covered under that second paragraph at the bottom. All right. Wanted to press the board to certainly eliminate having to do redundant work and costs throughout that period.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the colleagues' interesting, interest in making sure that we're doing everything above board. Technically, the way I see it is we're correcting, taking care of an oversight, something that was overlooked. And because we have it worded as such, listing plats and all the plats that he did during a period of time, I will move that we accept this proposed resolution.
For a motion?
I'll second that.
All right, motion second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay, our next item would be the approval of a customer service request. And we have the force, the request from our customer service department. I think we had some growing things there. But I believe these are going to make the operation and service to the customers a little bit better for the customers as well as for our department personnel. I did have one question. Under the lockbox for utility payments associated with cost, what bank are we going to use?
Southern Bank.
Southern Bank.
Yes, and we'll run it through Southern Bank where we have our central depositing account. And immediately upon, then the process of the payments that the depositing for our account, they will never come up. They go directly into the account. And they provide the reports to us.
Okay. All right. Board, Sandy, if you want to go over these, for us. I think it's just three of them.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you.
The requests that we've brought before you tonight are to initiate a lockbox service. We brought this request, you know, I believe a couple of months ago. You'd asked us to get some more information, bring it back to you. The lockbox would basically be a post office box where the payments would be mailed to, not at the county. They'll go directly to the bank. They'll open all the mail and go through everything, create a report for us with the account numbers and the payments made. They will post the payments directly to our accounts, and they'll see the money immediately. And then they will provide us with a report that we can import into our software. I believe it was one day last week, we received 400 water payments in one morning. The ladies had to open them, sort them, manually post them, endorse all the checks, balance everything, create a deposit slip, and get it to the bank. And 400 checks on a busy day in the middle of everything else is really, it's really difficult. We process close to 2,000 mailing payments per month just for utility bills. So, we're looking to, to do this. Most places do this, and most of the electric companies and gas companies do this. There's going to be some initial costs, and then going forward, of course, there'll be some costs. A big chunk, I was surprised, the post office box, they estimated $1,500 a year. But it'll be, I believe in Pennsylvania? Pennsylvania. They were not able to provide us a lockbox in Charlotte like we had to discuss before trying to make happen. The other option that we've asked for as well is to accept electronic payments. Really, it was Earl Roundtree, I think, last year at some point had requested this. We've been researching it. As more and more people make their payments online through their banking bill payment systems, this will allow us to accept those checks, or those payments electronically instead of receiving a paper check. If they go online, most banks, you are able to go online one day and make that payment effective the next day. So, it would be just a one to two day lapse, instead of them actually mailing a check. I was getting it, having to post it, and go through that process. It eliminates the checks in the mail. We don't have to worry about lost checks. And obviously, you know, brings us kind of into the 21st century, makes things a little easier for everybody. The last request is, is probably a really big one. Some time ago, we went from a once a month billing cycle to two times a month. The issue that we're running into is with the changes that we've made with our cutoff cycles, the 10-day window has really thrown things kind of out of whack for us as far as the end of month process and the processes that we have to go through. We would really like to see this brought back to a once a month billing cycle. This is at the request of the ladies that actually work the customer service window. I think one of the reasons originally we changed, we were having trouble with the lines and the volume. Now, we have two windows to accept payments, and I think we're better able to handle those issues once a month rather than spreading them out twice a month. We're requesting that we go back to this with the October billing cycle for bills that are due in October. We've, you know, we went through some difficult times with getting the word out last time. We're hoping that now we've seen some things we can do differently. Carol on YouTube, Senator Matt Carroll is creating a Facebook page for the customer service division. So, we're getting more information out, you know, to our citizens as much as possible. But we would like to do this, put everybody on cycle one and completely do away with the cycle two bills.
Okay. Can we pay for all of this?
We can pay for all of this.
Yes, sir.
And, and I know it looks like a lot of money. Honestly, the amount of time that the ladies are spending opening mail and processing mail and all the different people involved, this overall, I think, will be a money saver, or at the very least, a break even as far as that goes. But it frees up so much time for them to do things that they're not able to do because they're spending the entire day processing mail.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So, the electronic payments section is addressing tax payments and water bills?
No, right now, these are strictly for utility billing.
Just utility billing?
Yes.
So, if, if the citizens of the county catch on and say, you know, I really like that electronic payment, do our lockbox annual reoccurring costs, could we expect those to go down? Are they, are they flat cost, or are they based on the amount of activity?
The software maintenance, bank maintenance, and P.O. box reset costs, the bank processing fee per item, I believe, is about 22 cents per item.
So, it could, that could go down some for cost that reoccurred?
Yes, but yes, if we went and moved to the electronic payments, yes. And, and we don't know, we weren't able really to get a number of the number of payments that we think come from the banks that are sending the checks in. But, yeah, we think that number can come down. How substantial it would be, we really are not sure. Again, these are estimates based on just under 2,000 checks per month being processed. The electronic payments, I can't remember the number, I'm not on YouTube. I can't remember the number of payments per month we estimated there, but, yes, sir, that could.
And another question. John Doe sends a payment to Pennsylvania. He mails it to the lockbox. And he puts a note in there. Are we going to get that note forwarded to us?
That is a good question. Generally, what they're telling us, I believe, is that anything with them, any of the coupons will be scanned and available to us to view. I would assume that that would be any correspondence. The envelopes would be clearly marked, do not include correspondence, you know, that this addresses for payments only. Correspondence should be directed to us. Of course, that, you know, people would miss that and things will happen. But I would think that we would be able to see that in scanned items.
We can answer questions.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Sandy. We have the proposed requested changes, three of them. What is the plan for the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I think, you know, we all, we all know what the situation is with computers nowadays. People pay their bills on the computer, through the computer. I think it's something that we have talked about and looked at several different times. She mentioned a year ago, I think it's probably been longer than that, that it's been talked about several different times. I think we need to go to it. I know there's a cost associated with it. But we have to take those costs sometimes and, and deal with it from there. So, I'll make the motion that we accept their recommendations and go forward with it. And if it doesn't work, we can always go back.
All right, have a motion?
I second the motion.
All right, so motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay. That completes our agenda item for the night. We have any other suggestions? If not, we'll have our commissioner comments. Hard, but, wish you well, good luck.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming. We had a better time than we usually do tonight. It's good to see people take an interest in what's going on. We appreciate y'all's time.
I would like this one. Yes, I also would like to thank you for coming tonight and encouraging neighbors to come out. And, you know, we try to make improvements as we go along. And sometimes we take a step forward, and sometimes we have to take a step backward and then go forward again. But we are trying to get it right.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. And I certainly like to comment on this young lady sitting right here. She is mighty good.
We thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's good to see you. We appreciate your input and we appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
I too thank you for coming, for all the input, hard work that all of our county employees put in to try to make things work better for citizens in the county. I would like to recognize, I don't want to like put people on the spot, but I would like to recognize our, our new DSS interim director. It's been appointed to Department of Social Services. Mr. Jeff, Jeffrey Merritt is, is leaving on the 25th. So, Ms. Angela Matt Harley is our new director. I don't know if she wants to say anything, but certainly we look forward to you doing a great job for us as you've always done in your current position. Okay. All right, I think our county manager, you survived perfectly. It does well. All right, there's no other comments. We do need to go into closed session. We'll need a motion to go into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 118, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Some move?
Second. All right, so motion second, propose closed session. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? All right, thank you. All right, we're going to need a motion to come out of closed session.
Some move?
Second.
All right, so motion second, come out of closed session. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay, we have one item for closed session. We need a motion to authorize the chairman and board to sign the letter to be submitted to the attorney as discussed in closed session.
Some move?
Second.
So, motion second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Some move?
Second.
All right, so motion second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? All right, very good.